... and Councilmember Jared Taylor. So, thank you and thanks for letting us honor you. We have some awesome sponsors of this program. And one of them is Sal's Gilbert Pizza. Today, I think I read is National Pasta Day. And the month of October is National Pizza Month. I don't know why those two things are sticking in my head right now. Maybe because I haven't eaten dinner yet. But we're combining pizza and pasta. If you haven't ever had the pasta pizza over at Sal's, tonight would be a perfect night to go do that. And inside your bags, there will be a coupon for you to be able to use over at Sal's. They're great community partners, locally owned business, and we love supporting them. And also Culinary Dropout has sponsored something. And we'll tell you what it is right now. We love our teachers in Gilbert. There is no more important profession in all of our community than teaching. I'm the daughter of an educator and I gratefully send four children to school every day to go learn from the best teachers in the world right here in Gilbert. So if you are one of our teachers, our educators, or administration for any of our schools, will you please stand so we can recognize you? A quick note, it is Thursday night. They are not required to be here. But they love your kids so much that they're here tonight. And we really are grateful. I need a helper. I usually pick one of our younger individuals. Will you come help me? Do you mind? Okay, come on. I promise it'll be easy and you get to hand out like something cool. Are you ready? Okay, what's your name?
Emily.
Emily, what grade are you in?
Second.
Emily's in second grade. You're almost as tall as me. If I took my shoes off, you would know that we're almost the same height. All right, Emily, inside this bucket right here, thanks Vice Mayor, is the names of all the teachers who took time to fill out an application for all the kids that are here. So these teachers took extra time to do that. Again, not part of their daily work, but they think you guys are pretty cool. Will you pick one of those teachers' names out? And that teacher is going to get a $100 gift card donated by Culinary Dropout in downtown Gilbert. So, good community partners as well. Did you get one? It might not be your teacher, but she'll, he or she will still love you. All right, is Mrs. Litwin from Santan Elementary here? Is Mrs. Litwin? You won, Mrs. Litwin. Do you want to go give her this? Thank you. Thank you, Emily. You don't have to take Emily out, but she did a good job. Thanks, Emily. We love doing this because we do it efficiently and in a fun way. We have Valerie here. Valerie is going to take photos that will be up on Flickr later this evening and also on the Town of Gilbert Facebook page. You're welcome to use those, but we want you to be able to take your own photos as well. So what we'll do is we will invite all of our student citizens of the month who are from either Ashland Ranch Elementary all the way through Islands Elementary. So if you're our student citizen of the month and your school starts with A through I, come on down and Councilmember Ray will tell you where to stand. Right over there. You guys look amazing. Thanks for being here. Come on down. Don't be shy. All these people are going to cheer for you. You're going to feel really famous. Just a minute. All right, Vice Mayor Cook will help us with the names?
Maybe you can let the parents know they can come down and take pictures.
Yeah, if you want to and it's your child's turn and we do it in order of the school name, right over here. Okay, thanks.
Well, with that, thank you, Mayor. Our first student is from Ashland Ranch Elementary, Jack McDonald. Yes, she is. Yes, she is. Mayor, 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 I think. Is it that? Oh, okay. From Bridges Elementary, Kelsey Oswald. From Burke Elementary, Nate Walker. From Kelray Ranch Elementary, Tyrone Muin. Yes. TJ, we like TJ. There we go. From Centennial Elementary, Joshua Guerrero. Woo-hoo. Also from Centennial Elementary, Noah Waxler. From Chandler Traditional Academy, Julia Fawson. Also from Chandler Traditional Academy, Lea Pink. Leila, excuse me. Lea Pink, yep. From Chapparrell Elementary, Madden Bryn Hall. From Charlotte Patterson Elementary, Parker Williams. From Christ Greenfield Lutheran, Nolan Duff. From Coronado Elementary, Mara Koima. Okay. From Edu Price School, Juniper Difer. Fantastic. From Gateway Point Elementary, Akemi Dewey. From Gilbert Elementary, Noah Baisa. A great smile. From Highland Park Elementary, Avery Keekbush. From Higley Traditional Academy, Emma Taylor. From Houston Elementary, Tam Enwin. Tam Win. Well, we were right. Yeah, sorry about that. I know. And Mayor, that's the last of our... And that's the last of our Group One.
All right, that's all of Group One. Group Two is the rest of our elementary school students. And we know that it's a school night. And so if your child has already gotten their award and you would like to leave, now would be a good time during the little transition here. So we'll have Group Two come up. And Group One, you're free to leave if you need to go. Thanks.
All right, Mayor. Group Two, our first school, is from Mesquite Elementary, Gavin Brown. From Neely Traditional Academy, Nathania Kalea. From Oak Tree Elementary, Parker Kazmerek. There it is. From Patterson Elementary, Taylor Castle. Mayor, she's the exact same height as you are. I know. From Pioneer Elementary, Madeline Stoudenberg. Stout Inberg? Excuse me. I have two more, I have two more months. Maybe one more month at this. From Playa Del Rey Elementary, Patrick Sampson. I know, I like that. I think we said that with cartwheels and... Yes. All right, Patrick. From Quartz Hill Elementary, Owen Sixkiller. From Riggs Elementary, Preston Brook. From Santan Elementary, Elliot Gurgunder. From Settlers Point Elementary, Jamison Goddup. Thank you. From Sonoma Ranch Elementary, Ariella Strock. Yeah, we're going to say it right. Ari- Ariel or Ariel? Ariella. Ariella, okay. It's all right. From Spectrum Elementary, Bryn Lee Coons. From Town Meadows Elementary, Zoya Mosini. It's beautiful. And our last elementary school is from Val Vista Lakes Elementary, August Robellas. Is it Giroux? I think it's Giroux as well. Connor Giroux. I thought it was Giroux first. I bet, I bet you it's Giroux. Well, you know, we'll find out.
Hey, Group Three is all of our junior high and high school students that are here for, to be honored. So come on down.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would've said Giroux. Oh, it is Giroux. You know what? I, I give it my best. All right, from Campbell Verdi High School, Connor Giroux. Fantastic. From Cooley Middle School, Trinity Harris. From Gilbert Classical Academy, Jojo Isbeck. From Gilbert High School, Carly Johansson. Yes. From Greenfield Junior High, Sarah Bancroft. From Higley High School, Zawin Jack Rin. From Leading Edge Gilbert Early College, Christian Garvin. From Mesquite Junior High School, Jake Gorrell. From Payne Junior High, Ella Brostrum. From Payne Junior High, Mackenzie Graham. From Perry High School, Triton Johnson. And our last school is from South Valley Junior High, Deanna Leah Franco.
...
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. We're so glad we got to honor the students. And the rest of our, the business part of our meeting will start in just a couple minutes. Alright, I think we're ready to start our October 17th, 2019 Town Council meeting. We're grateful for these very good-looking Scouts that are in front of us today, uniformed and all. And we'll pass the time over to Councilmember Taylor to assist.
Mayor, thank you. We're so lucky to have the Scouts with us tonight. Am I missing any Scouts? Okay. I didn't see any others out there. Okay, wonderful. Well, thanks for being here tonight. We love recognizing the Scouts. We love the Scout motto, "Be prepared." And you guys are prepared. You're looking great. We will start, we're gonna have Brennan lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Mayor, and then we'll go ahead and have them introduce themselves. So Brennan, if you don't mind stepping forward, and if the audience will please rise, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Audience may be seated. Now, for these good-looking Scouts, we're gonna recognize you tonight. We'd like to say your name and the rank that you are tonight. And this good Cup Master here is handing out what we give each Scout every council meeting is a pocket copy of the Constitution. We love that. It's on our town seal here up on the dais. So Brennan, why don't you start us off? Tell us your name and your rank.
I am Brennan Day, and my rank is a Weebolos II.
Okay, you're gonna speak up a little bit louder so they can hear you, okay? And you can just pass this down.
My name is Carlos Ortega, and I'm a Weebolos II.
My name's Eric Forshe, and I'm a Weebolos II.
My name is Darwin Carvahal. And I'm Bob Cat.
Yeah, you are. Be proud of it.
My name is Paris, and I'm a Weebolos II.
My name is David Gollivious, and I am a Weebolos II.
My name is Dominic, and I am a Weebolos II.
My name is Tate Hanson, and I'm a Life Scout.
My name is Davis Rug, and I'm a Life Scout.
My name is Cohen Claire, and I'm a Star Scout.
My name is Hunter Smith, and I'm a Life Scout.
My name's Chris Hanson, and I'm an Eagle Scout.
Wonderful. Thank you for, big hand for the Scouts here tonight. We're so glad to have you. Mayor, I don't know if you know anything about raising boys or anything, or Boy Scouts, but do you have any words that you'd like to leave with them tonight?
I'm just eternally grateful to both Scout leaders and their mothers for all the work that they do. So thanks, you guys, for being here.
Thank you, Scouts. Another big hand. You may be seated.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. At this time, I'd like to invite Pastor Jamie Johnson of Life Community Church to the podium to offer our invocation. Pastor Johnson? Councilmember Ray, can I ask you to offer invocation?
I'm happy to, Mayor. Our Father in Heaven, we come before thee grateful for many blessings. We're grateful to live in this community, to live in this great state and this great country. We are grateful for those who risked their lives on our behalf as first responders, as military personnel, and for their families who support them. We are grateful for each of the residents, the businesses, the faith groups in this community who do so much to make Gilbert the excellent town that it is. We pray for thy guidance and thy Spirit with us tonight. Help us to be a little bit more kind, look for ways to serve others, and to make other people smile. We ask in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Before we get to, oh, actually, we'll ask the Clerk to conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jen Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember Amy Entes.
Here.
A quorum is present.
You, Lisa. Before we get to our proclamations and presentations, I just wanted to highlight one important event that occurred this week in the town of Gilbert, and that was that Councilmember Scott Anderson had a birthday. We are grateful he was born. He often refers to himself as the elder statesman on the council, and we're grateful for the wisdom and the experience that he really does bring to this council. So happy birthday, and I think there's cookies somewhere around here for you as well. So, there you go. We have several proclamations and presentations. We will ask Councilmember Ray to take care of proclamation number one, Councilmember Scott Anderson to take care of proclamation number two, and Vice Mayor Eddie Cook to help us with proclamation three.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to invite up Jackie Needham and her group of three young Marines. Please. What a good-looking group. I'm gonna pass the microphone. We'll start with Jackie, and then she can decide which way to go from there. But we'll pass the microphone down and have each one of these individuals introduce themselves.
Hi, my name is Jackie Needham. I'm with the East Valley Young Marines, and I am the executive officer for our unit, also with the Grand Canyon Regiment. And I'm the training officer for the East Valley Young Marines and the Grand Canyon Regiment.
Hi, I'm Corporal Needham A.
I am Sergeant Isaac Needham.
For those of you who are nervous to speak in a microphone, it doesn't get any easier as you get older, I'll tell you that. We appreciate these people coming here today. And as I read the parts of this proclamation, it will explain it a little bit better. This is the proclamation for Red Ribbon Week. Whereas alcohol and drug abuse in the nation has reached epidemic stages, and visible unified prevention education efforts by community members must be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs. And whereas the East Valley Young Marines, the local unit of the United States Young Marines, is a youth education and service program for boys and girls that focuses on promoting the mental, moral, and physical development of its members, including character building, leadership, and encouraging a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. Whereas, the Young Marines is the official youth program of the United States Marine Corps and is the focal point for the U.S. Marine youth drug demand reduction efforts, and is open to youth ages eight through high school completion who are in good standing in their school. And whereas, the National Red Ribbon Campaign will continue celebrating every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through the 31st, 2019. Now therefore, Jen Daniels and the Town Council do hereby proclaim this week of October 23rd through the 31st, 2019 as Red Ribbon Week. Let's give them a round of applause.
So just to tell you a little bit more of our program, we are a nationwide program, and we actually have a couple units. One in Iwo Jima, and we have one in Okinawa. So we have a lot of the members who are there, they have families, so a lot of their kids attend the youth program. We just got done with our leadership school. So we actually have schools that the kids attend. So we had a junior and a senior leadership school up in Prescott at Emmanuel Pines, and where the kids actually spend an entire weekend, not just learning, but we do some drill. They actually love C.O.D., so it's actually interesting, and they're really good at it. And this week, we kick off our Red Ribbon Week, which will be around many of the cities, just getting the awareness out. We have them as young as age. She actually is eight. So the things that we have the youngsters want to do is kinda like salt tables, so we do flag-folding ceremonies. And as they get older, we have them actually go out into the community and give the speeches where we actually have a mandatory, at least 30 minutes of a speech where they have to make awareness for the kids. This is what drugs are and the dangers of them. So, that's a little bit of ours.
To each of the young Marines, we say thank you. We look forward to great things out of each of you, and we appreciate you guys coming tonight. Thank you.
Each year, we count it a special privilege to be able to recognize a special week during the year, Veterans Week, from November 4th through the 11th, culminating in the Veterans Day activities. We are honored by those who have served to protect us, protect our freedoms. And I'd like to ask Pam, and Phil, and Chris, Dave, to come up. So Chris isn't here. Come up. Oh, Jim's not here. Okay. These three are representative of many veterans. By the way, if we have any veterans in the room, would you please stand so we can recognize you? Thank you for your service. And what I'd like to do is ask each one of these three to just introduce yourself, your involvement in Veterans Week, and also what branch of the service you served in.
Go ahead. Yeah? Hi, I'm Phil Bobadilla, U.S. Marine Corps, 1965 to 69, Vietnam Vet. I've been involved with this organization for the last 15 years. Our committee, it's a town committee. We do strictly volunteer on that. We have veterans and non-veterans on our committee. We try to put together this program, November 7th this year, midday, to honor the veterans and also first responders, and also currently serving. Try to do a good job every year. We've grown from about 300 in attendance to over 600. I don't think it's the free food at the end. I do think it's the program. So if you have time, wanna come out, honor veterans, and see a wonderful program, it's gonna be heartwarming and very uplifting. Come out and see us November 7th, 11 to 11:30 to 1:30.
Dave Rosenfeld, retired Army from '82 to 2004. Served with the 82nd, 3rd Armored Division, and some of those other great American units out there. I would like to make sure that everybody knows, we've got these little postcards that are up by the door on the table. Please grab one, share it, mark it on your calendar. It's just got the contact information for where we are. It's gonna be right here behind us, out in the field. We will have military static displays. We're gonna have current day military equipment, as well as some historic vehicles. We will be landing a helicopter out there as well, so that's always exciting. And I really would like to ask all of you that stood up, that are veterans, please try to make it out there with us. If you're able to, we'll actually coin you. So if you've been around for a while and you know what a coin is, we're gonna hook you up. And of course, there's free lunch as well.
I'm Pamela Reinsmith, and I served in the Marine Corps from 1979 to 1982. And I've been involved with this committee for as long as Phil.
Thank you very much. Let me read just a portion of this proclamation. Whereas Veterans Day, November 11th, is set aside annually for celebrating our military veterans, and was begun as the commemoration of the end of hostilities of World War I, which went into effect on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. And whereas November 11th marks a day to honor America's veterans for their patriotism, love of country, and willingness to serve and sacrifice for the common good. And whereas, like the heroes before them, today a new generation of men and women are fighting for freedom around the globe. Now therefore, I, Jen Daniels, Mayor of the town of Gilbert, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the week of November 4th, 2019, as Veterans Week in Gilbert, Arizona. Let's give all our veterans another round of applause. I would love to invite our fantastic domestic violence team to the front. So the month of October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And, oh yes, to our PD team, Judge, Police, our presiding judge. So the month of October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclaimed by Governor Ducey. So Governor Ducey has asked all of the communities in the state of Arizona to light their communities purple. And purple is the color that represents the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So, before I begin, Jim, if you can introduce yourself and the team members on what role you have related to domestic violence.
Great. Good evening. My name is Jim Newgobert. I'm the town prosecutor, and my role is to obviously lead the prosecution unit in the Endeavor Program, working, obviously, with the courts, the police department, and the advocates that work in my office as well.
I'm Dean Aguilera. I'm one of the victim advocates in the prosecutor's office, and I work directly with survivors.
My name is Jeff Wolfe. I am an assistant town prosecutor with the town of Gilbert. I am one of the prosecutors assigned to the Endeavor Program, where we at least strive to hold offenders accountable and seek justice for victims.
My name is Stephanie Bradley. I'm another victim advocate in the prosecutor's office, and I work directly with survivors.
Good evening, folks. Sergeant Tim Brown, Gilbert Police Department, who supervises the Family Violence Unit.
Derek Hogan, one of the detectives for the Family Violence Unit.
Brendan Wilson, I'm another detective in the Family Violence Unit of the Police Department.
Good evening, everyone. My name is David Kutch, and I'm the presiding judge here in the court. And we also do our best to be fair and hold those accountable that have been convicted of domestic violence. of domestic violence offenses.
Thank you. Could you give these fine folks a round of applause? It's not a pleasant topic to discuss, but the Endeavor Program, the acronym is E-N-D-V-R, which stands for Ending Domestic Violence Responsibly. This program started almost two years ago, this last, this December. And I've had the honor and privilege of actually serving as the Chairman of the Maricopa Association of Governments Regional Domestic Violence Council here in Maricopa County. And I will say that it is our goal, this team's goal, to heal families and make families whole again through this tragedy. Anyways, I'd just like to read real briefly here, this proclamation. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence, and how to show support for numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims. Therefore, I, Jen Daniels, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim that October 2019 is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and then next week, if you will go downtown, you'll see that our water tower will be lit purple. With that, give a round of applause for our team again.
Lots of things happening around the town, and we're grateful for all the work that so many do to make that possible. At this time, we do have communications from citizens, we'll let Vice Mayor catch his breath for just a second. Do we have any requests to speak?
Yes, Mayor, we do. We do have one individual that would like to speak, but we also have an individual that does not want to speak, and I just want to add it to the record. Mara Orgirun, she does not want to speak. Her comment is, "A stoplight pedestrian walkway at the power line trail in Greenfield." And she's basically asking to prevent future deaths. She attached a picture, and I guess the, you know, the unfortunate death of this young lady that was there recently. We'd like to have, I think it's Max? Is it Darren Overmax? Max, if you'd like to come up to the podium, if you can share us your name and place of residence.
My name is Max Hall, and I would like to ask if we can put a crosswalk where Greenfield is, on what he was saying, please.
Yes, this is my son, Max. We're here tonight, Lauren was my niece, that was Max's cousin. Lauren was a wonderful little girl, and there's been a lot of crossings. There's been a lot of children trying to cross that road for a while now, and I know there's been some talk about putting one in, and right now, it's currently a year out, is what Gilbert is, and I'm here on behalf of the Hutchins family, and everyone else, to help prevent future accidents where another child could be killed. The city can't afford it, I will gladly go buy the paint if you can provide me a police officer, and I'll paint a crosswalk there. I'll help pay whatever it needs, so that there's no more future accidents that have occurred in late September. Sorry. You want to say anything else?
No. Thank you. Max, thank you so much for coming to the council meeting. It can be a little bit intimidating to stand at that podium, but you're awesome, and way to represent your family in a really positive way. So thank you for doing that, and for being brave. I just want to touch on that, since there were two requests to speak on that. Next Thursday, this Town Council has a day-long retreat, and we will be discussing both the priority of trail crossings, as well as some of the other priorities within our CIP plan. So that would be one of those, and so we will be having that conversation next Thursday.
Will there be a ruling next Thursday, then?
No, we don't make decisions in retreats, we only make decisions in open meetings like this. But we will be giving direction to our staff, which is an opportunity for us to prioritize those items. And I can't speak anymore on it, because we have a rule about having a conversation or a dialogue on it.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
But I would encourage you to either attend that, or look for those minutes.
Okay, will that be here?
We'll give you some more information. Thank you. Valerie, will you assist and make sure they understand? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mayor, we're going to poll. We have to fix this chair over there.
Councilmember Ray, I have a new chair on order for you, I've already taken care of it, because the Planning Commission had an issue with it, so Monica was handling it for us.
Let it be known that it was not me that broke this chair.
I don't believe you.
It's not good for the self-esteem.
We do not believe you, one bit. Mayor, to our consent calendar, we're going to poll Agenda Item 6A, and that will be voted separately. We're also going to poll Agenda Item 18 and 20, and with that, I move that we approve Agenda Items 1, excuse me, 4, 5, 6, 6B, 6C, 7 through 17, 19, 21, 21A, 22 through 27.
We have a motion in a second, please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote, thank you. That does move us to Agenda Item 6A.
I'm just going to be abstaining from the vote, Mayor.
Thank you, is there a motion on Agenda Item 6A?
Yes, Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item 6A.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, please vote. That motion carries with a 6-0 vote, thank you.
Agenda Item 18, Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, so this topic has to do with our water treatment facilities, there's really two things looking to be funded here, the fluoridation process, and then a process that helps us manage the pH balance in the water. Mayor, I know we're kind of boxed in on this one here, with the 2,000 referendum, but, you know, this comes up from time to time, and I think it's always good to just educate people, at least on the process, if those people do have concerns about this. I do want to have a separate vote of this, but I did want to just make a couple of points on this, and then we can just go to vote on this one here. But if I can have David Fabiano come up, I want to just ask him a question, a little bit about the safety of this, because when I dug into this a little bit more, part of the reason this funding is here is because the fluoride, I can't ever say the full name, had been leaking out over months, and it's pretty dangerous stuff, right, David? Or if I drink some of it, would it do me good or harm?
Mayor Daniels, Councilmember Taylor, hydrofluoric acid is a dangerous chemical, in concentrations it is deadly, if one were to ingest it or breathe the gases that come off of it.
Yeah, and this is what the controversy is, right? You know, why is that in our water, right? And the voters weighed in on it, and it passed, and council can't necessarily repeal that, Town Manager's been really good, but I don't want that stuff in my water. But here's actually the good news, when you dig into the science of it, and you put the politics aside, the amount of fluoride that the dentists recommend that we have for the alleged health benefits is naturally occurring in our water supply, without this being added to it. And so I just wanted to put politics aside, and just focus on the actual science of it, and the safety of it, in that, number one, it's dangerous for our employees to be exposed to this, it's expensive to operate, and we actually have it at the levels that's naturally occurring for the benefit anyways. So to pull it out, everyone's teeth isn't going to fall out, right? The sky's not going to fall out, right? Because it's already in the proper levels in our water supply. But the point needs to be made that if people do want to have this, it does have to come from the people. We can't take the action to repeal it over the dais. But it happened 20 years ago, and to me, in the vote was like 14,000 to 12,000, you remember those elections, you know, when they're, those elections are far different now. But the point is, is it needs to come from residents, and science educates us over time, right? We learn from science, and we can change our minds, right? We're not bound to that for time and all eternity. So if there is residents that are concerned about this, then a resident would have to initiate that process, put it again to the voters, it's not something that we can do from the dais. I'm of the opinion, I don't want that stuff in my water, I'd rather not have it, I'd rather have this Agenda Item be reduced, so we just fund the sulfuric acid that helps us with that pH balance, that's a very, very important thing to have in our water supply. And anyways, that's what I would like to see on this, but I know we're boxed in on this, Mayor, I just wanted to put that out in terms of education, this comes up from time to time, and if we can just continue, if somebody wants to do that, then they can do it. That's what I wanted to say, thank you, Mayor, for the time. David, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion on Agenda Item 18?
Yes, Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item 18.
Second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 6-1 vote, thank you.
Mayor, Agenda Item 20, Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, so this has to do with Part II of a space needs assessment. Now, this has come up a couple of times, and I haven't been supportive of it, I'm not going to support this one either. Let me just share a couple of things that I learned, and the facts here. Number one, there's been about $50,000 committed to looking at the space in our Police Department. That project is not done, it's ongoing, and there's been a few complications in that. There was a change order, originally, there was like $400,000 or $500,000 to do everything, and then it became just PD for $50,000. And then we did a CO for $132,000 and change, just for public works. That's not complete either. This is $175,000 for everything outside of Muni 1. And time ran out, I was trying to get how much it was for this space, I mean, we're pushing like $400,000 or $500,000 here for things that can really be done internally, or by a couple of contractors. So again, I just don't think this is a super good use of our taxpayer dollar on this, and if we really need this, we could look at the private sector that does this with internal resources every day. You know, I remember Jacob Ellis telling us that we don't have the talent in Gilbert to do it, and he just, I mean, we have so many talented people that could do this here. So I think we can get this done at a much, much lower cost. I do think it is a good thing to do, but for half a million dollars, and not in a super organized way, I just see this as a poor use of taxpayer dollars, so I won't be supporting this tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Is there a motion on Agenda Item 20?
Yes, Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item 20.
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 5-2 vote, thank you. I believe that takes us to...
Public meeting. Yeah, we did do that.
That does complete our consent agenda, and brings us to our public hearing items.
Yes, Mayor, we're going to, we have speakers for Agenda Item 28, 33, and 34.
Thank you, does the council wish to speak on any additional Agenda items? All right, I will open the public hearing on Agenda Items 29, 30, 31, 32, and close the public hearing on those Agenda items, and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Items 29, 30, 31, and 32.
Second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote, thank you. I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 28. Vice Mayor?
I don't know if we want staff to give a...
That's probably a great idea. We'll have staff do a brief overview presentation. Is that Ava?
Yes.
How are you, Ava?
Good, thank you.
Like, starting not to build a C late at night.
As mentioned, this is a major general plan amendment for the property at the northeast corner of Warner and Wrecker Roads. The property is shown in blue on this slide, and is about 124.8 acres. It is surrounded by predominantly residential, church uses, and to the east, light industrial, business park, and general commercial. This is a major general plan amendment, because the applicant is proposing to change over 40 acres of non-residential use to residential use. What is shown on the left is the current use in the general plan, and you'll see the bulk of it is light industrial with some business park and general commercial. And what is shown on the right is the proposed use, which is about 86 acres residential, and about 30 acres left of light industrial. As mentioned, the major general plan amendment, and this will require a two-thirds vote of Town Council. Also proposed is a zoning amendment, same mix of land uses. On the left is the current, the light industrial, the business park, and the general commercial. And on the right is the proposed mix of residential uses, and light industrial along Warner Road, and bordering the light industrial and business park to the east. The mix of residential goes from approximately 3.5 units per acre to about 15 units per acre. Along with the zoning is a planned area development overlay. This is because all of the categories proposed will require slight deviations from the land development code. I don't know if you want me to go through all of them, but basically, they are slight changes to setbacks to lot widths and lengths, and some setbacks on the light industrial. The applicant is providing a large area of open space at the corner of Warner and Wrecker, about 22,500 square feet. This application went to the Planning Commission on October 2nd. At that time, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended a motion of approval to move forward to council, and that is what is requested tonight, a motion to adopt the attached resolution, and to make findings a fact for the zoning. I'm available for any questions at this time, or Adam Bao is here for the applicant with presentations and our questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council to staff? Okay, thank you, Ava.
Thank you.
Do we need Adam Bao to give us a thing, or are we good with...
Adam Bao?
Just moving forward.
It's Adam Ba, but that's okay, we like you, Adam. It's okay, Ava.
Ava's still new.
I know, don't worry, Ava. That was Councilmember Ray calling you out, not me.
I think we're good.
I was calling Adam out, not you.
Yeah, I think so. We will go immediately to the public comment now.
So, I actually just want to put this in the record, Kathy Tilke does not want to speak, but she is in favor of this project moving forward.
Thank you, I think that's Kathy Tilke on behalf of the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce, so thank you, I know that they heard this presentation in the Public Policy Committee, and have submitted their letter. Any other questions? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I just want to make a quick comment. Mayor, I just want to make a quick comment. Normally, in the past, I know the mayor and I have aligned quite a bit and some other of my fellow council members here. When we see properties of this magnitude and this large that has been designated for commercial, light industrial, and so forth, we tend to want to maintain and keep those properties as is in anticipation of possible revenue generation, you know, from commercial or light industrial or even retail. I will say that what's been nice is that there's been a wonderful compromise that has been made by the applicant, as well as staff. And I believe the council will agree that this is actually a good compromise for both sides. So this is really a great example of a win-win for everybody. And I just want to thank our staff, the applicant, the property owner. And I will be in favor of moving forward with this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cook. With... Oh, Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, if I could just add another comment. I think previous councils did a pretty good job in terms of some planning. And there were some good general plans. And it's put us in some really favorable positions for a couple of things. Like, they did over-purchase parklands, but it gave us flexibilities to zero in and home when we were ready to. And then we could sell the surplus, right? They also had extra commercial zoning in some cases. And this is one of those cases that you could sort of downzone. You know, we've heard that label be put on things. But as the town develops, you know, some are less viable than others. And this is one where we needed that flexibility. So I'm supportive of this and happy to make the motion on this tonight because we have seen very great success in other areas like the Santan Village and on Power Road. But it's made this less visible. And Cooley Station's less viable. And Cooley Station also is an example of that as well. So I think that flexibility has been helpful for us. And so I'm happy to make the motion tonight, Mayor, when you're ready.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. I will close the public hearing on this agenda... Did you... Close the public hearing on this agenda item? And I think, Vice Mayor, you said you needed to make one adjustment.
Yeah, so I would like to make the motion because there has to be a change here. But you can second it.
Okay.
So...
Thank you. I thought Jordan wanted to. He was smirking down there.
Maybe he doesn't want to say, "I don't know." Actually, we do want to, you know, maybe acknowledge Councilmember Ray. He did do a reconsideration on this to allow the applicant to actually accelerate these plans a little sooner because they would have had to wait a year. So thank you, Councilmember Ray, for doing that. So there is a slight change in Exhibit C. We need to make a change to the lot width dimension. And the new number is now 45 feet. With that, I move that we approve Agenda Item 28 with that change.
Second.
Please vote.
Third.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. Above and beyond, as usual, with this council. All right.
And we look forward to a beautiful neighborhood. So thank you.
Here, here.
All right. Agenda Item 33. I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 33 and ask staff to come to the podium to do another brief presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Sydney Bethel. I'm a planner too with the Development Services Department. The request before you tonight is a text amendment related to the addition of a new sign type in certain locations within the Heritage Village Center zoning district.
Sydney, can I get you to just speak a little bit closer to the microphone?
Oh, yeah, sorry about that.
Councilmember Anderson.
Oh. Yeah. Sorry about that. So to provide some context into this proposed text amendment, our land development code currently does not permit rooftop signage within it. Most other cities research do not permit the erection of new rooftop signage. And some of the reasons cited by other municipalities include avoiding the cluttering of city skylines and maintaining the aesthetics and design qualities of an area. There are some cities, however, that do permit new rooftop signage to be erected. And also, what is more commonly seen is historically preserved signs within other municipalities. I'm just going to provide a brief overview of each one of the elements of the proposed text amendment, first starting with location. So these proposed roof signs would only be permitted within the Heritage Village Center, within the HVC zoning district. And this is only located along Gilbert Road and to some areas directly east and west. It will only be permitted on buildings three stories in taller, fronting Gilbert Road. And only one roof sign will be permitted per bounded area. So there are three different areas that are displayed up on the screen for you there, split into segments of 1, 2, and 3. So in order to avoid clustering and to provide some more even distribution, only one roof sign will be permitted per bounded area as displayed on the presentation. Moving on to context. The sign would be considered a non-commercial sign as it would not promote a particular business, service, or product. But it would contribute to the visual identity or character of the Heritage District through extraordinary aesthetics, qualities, creative, or innovation. So therefore, whatever building it would be mounted on, it would not be allowed to advertise the services within that building or another building within the Heritage District. So examples of a non-commercial message could be Gilbert or Heritage District. Moving on to lighting and design guidelines. The lighting must be exposed neon, decorative bulbs, or tubing. It must be architecturally compatible with the building. And it must comply with the existing design guidelines for the Heritage District and also if there are any later renditions. The sign area must not exceed 200 square feet, and it must not extend above 15 feet above the roof line. It must be located a minimum of two feet from the edge of the roof and must be mounted to stylize individual letters and graphics. There have been three separate hearings where there are recommendations on this proposed text amendment. The first one took place on April 17, 2019, at the Redevelopment Commission hearing. The Redevelopment Commission recommended postponement of the text amendment with a 3 to 0 vote until after town council consideration of the possible adoption of the updated Heritage District design guidelines that have been postponed. About five months later, we did bring this back with some modified elements to the text amendment to the Redevelopment Commission on September 18, 2019. At this hearing, the Redevelopment Commission recommended approval with a 4 to 1 vote to the Planning Commission of the proposed text amendment. At that hearing, there were eight members of the public who were present who were against the rooftop signs. Two of them did speak in opposition. And there was one member of the public who was there who spoke in support of the signs. At the October 2, 2019, Planning Commission public hearing, the Planning Commission recommended not to approve the proposed text amendment with a 5 to 2 vote. Some reasons that were cited by the vote against were issues with regulating the content, saying that there are enough signs in the downtown and elements along there. And the people who voted for it, they stated that the Heritage District is a unique place that has grown over time in the last 30 years and that we should embrace these unique opportunities. At that public hearing, there also were five members of the public who were there in opposition. Two did speak. And there was, again, one member of the public who was there to speak in support. And we also have received a letter of support from the Chamber of Commerce for this. It's staff recommendation to adopt the ordinance for Z19-04, amending the land development code. And I'm here for further questions.
Thank you, Sydney. Any questions for staff at this time? Thank you. All right. We will move to public comment. Vice Mayor, how many requests to speak do we have?
I'm going to say we have about 15.
And all of them wish to speak?
They do. And some of them don't want to speak. So I'll enter that into the public record. But there are four individuals that I need to get clarification if they are for or against. They do want to speak here. So Whitney Smith. Are you for or against? Rob Elder. Marcella Moffett.
So with 15 people who want to speak in three minutes per person, that takes us to 45 minutes for the public hearing portion of this. Recognizing that there's already been two public hearings, at least, on this agenda item, would anybody be in favor of us moving that to two minutes? For 15 people, that's 30 minutes worth of public hearing.
Okay. Then we'll do two minutes. So what I'm going to do, first of all, I'm going to... For those that don't want to speak but put comments, I'm going to put this in a public record here. So Anne Maria Watt. She is against this. Her comments are, "A block view of the water tower and takes away small-town feel." Curtis Watt is against. Jerry LaBelle is against. Esther Ogars is against. Vander Tristan is against. Neil Opit is against. And Janet Aiken is against. All right. And these are going to be random, Mayor. Russell Brown. If you can come up to the podium. Share us with your name for the record and city of residence. And you have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is... Excuse me. My name is Russell Brown. I'm actually a branding and promotional video expert. And I have read all the documentation on this and reviewed it. And I have to... This is just a little report of it. I say, "The study of successful restoration of rooftop signs to city centers does not apply to Gilbert at all. The nostalgia factor of seeing something old that was removed returned to an area where it once was an exciting and appropriate move for other cities. The problem with adding rooftop signs to Gilbert is they never existed here to begin with. The only recorded neon sign in the Heritage District would be on Liberty Market. You guys also have no control over what these signs say, which was why the previous council dissented on this. That makes me nervous as a branding person. Like, if I don't have control over a message, it's not branding. You also have other problems of... I noticed you put in that you're not allowed to build these signs within 50 feet of single-family homes, but there's no reference of multifamily housing. And if you've ever been 50 feet or even a block from a neon sign in a big city, let's say you are going to stay at the newly-planned hotel or you're in multifamily housing, that's something you would not want to be looking at or trying to go to bed outside your window. And lastly, the branding itself for people is largely ineffective when it's turned off. It just looks like scaffolding. Double... They can be backed, but people are looking at the backside of scaffolding. The signs aren't lit up. Like, they're ineffective advertising for the district during the daytime. That's it.
Thank you. If we can have Kirk Sabez to the podium. Kirk? You'll have two minutes to address the council. If you can share us your name for the record and city or town of residence.
Thank you, Mayor Daniels and council. It's actually Kurt Sable.
Thank you.
I've looked over this. And with the amount of change that has happened within the downtown Heritage District, I see this as a positive. There is... A lot of the older buildings have maintained the aesthetic that most people want for a small town like this. And I believe that signs like these, in a limited portion, without advertising anything, bring something new to the town. We're up and coming. We have a lot going on in this Heritage District. And I don't see it as a negative impact on the community. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Sandra Reynolds. If you can come to the podium. If you can share us your name for the record and city or town of residence. And you'll have two minutes to speak to the council.
I won't have time for my name. You cut off a minute. And I had this all written for three. All right. I'm Sandra Reynolds, and I'm a resident of Gilbert. So I'm going to read this really fast. Besides a small-town historical area not being an appropriate place for large rooftop signs, which are meant to be seen from miles away, there should be a major concern from what these signs are going to say. You really need to ask yourself why someone would pay a huge amount of money to put a sign up that doesn't promote their business. Everyone seems to be minimizing the fact that even though each sign must get approval, they can't base approval on what that sign says. According to code, based on legal requirements bought by a lawsuit against the town of Gilbert, the sign owner one doesn't have to tell you exactly what that sign will say. And they can change what the sign says at any time without further approval, as long as the message is not commercial, which these signs will be. I think it'll be very irresponsible for the town to open themselves up to this highly probable embarrassment. How would you feel if you were responsible for a sign that went up saying, "Get lit in Gilbert" over a bar? Or "Devil worshipers" that went up next to the church? Or even, "Are you horny" over the hotel? You have no right or say that those signs could not go up. And those are mild compared to what we could see. You may envision these signs saying something to enhance the community. But according to several scientific researches, this means that to capture someone's attention, the best thing is to say something shocking. And what better way to voice your grievance than a big neon sign that can be seen for miles around town? Commercial signs are about advertising. Non-commercial signs are about expressing your opinions. You may think the idea of these signs is neat and interesting, which they could be in an appropriate location. But have you fully considered the ramifications of something extremely undesirable goes on one of these? I ask that you keep the Heritage District a family-friendly location that a wide variety of businesses would want to come to, and you do not approve allowing these rooftop signs. Thank you. Read as fast as I could.
Thank you. You did great. Marcella Moffett-Brown. If you can share us your name for the record and place... Excuse me. City or town of residence. And you have two minutes to address the council.
Hi. I'm Marcella Moffett-Brown, and I'm in a tourney. So I've read over the proposal, and I'm against the signs. But mainly what I'm against is that this is a badly-written proposal. It's very ambiguous. It leaves a lot open to interpretation, especially as it's regarding speech. And also, just thinking about this, the amount of space that the proposal's having for three signs is less than a mile. And for me, it just feels like if, in the ideal world, the signs do say Gilbert Heritage District or something to that effect, it feels like we're compensating for something. And I don't know if I want to be a part of the city that's part of that joke. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Madison Curtis. Please come to the podium. If you can share us your name for the record, place, city or town of residence.
Hi, everyone. My name is Madison Curtis. I am a Town of Gilbert resident. First of all, I want to say, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry that you got stuck saying all the hard names.
It's good practice for me.
It is.
It's really stretching me. But thank you.
So I am for keeping the sign. I actually live in the Heritage District. And I think that a lot of people say that it's too much. We're overcompensating. And we're kind of outgrowing being a small town. And I highly disagree. Gilbert is so amazing. And the ideal signs that I read up on, having our name out there, is so amazing. Gilbert is one of my favorite places. That's actually why I moved here. I'm a native to Arizona, but I moved to Gilbert just because of all the kindness and everything around. And I think that we have so much to offer in the Heritage District. You know what I'm trying to say. And I think having just these signs are going to be really great opportunity just to keep up... up with that aesthetic that we have. Like, we are keeping all of the buildings the same and everything, and I just think adding the signs is not a bad idea. And that's what I have to say to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Rob Elder, if you can come to the podium, if you can share us your name for the record and city or town of residence. And you'll have two minutes to address the council.
Counsel, my name is Rob Elder, and I live in Gilbert. I moved here from out of state, and I did a lot of research before I did, and I chose Gilbert because of what it's for, what it stands for, and the community of it. I'm in favor of the sign. I think that it would bring a factor, that would bring a unique factor to downtown Gilbert that would actually help bring people to downtown, separates it apart from, say, downtown Chandler or other downtown areas. Something that we could talk about for people visiting that would enhance our ability to direct them to downtown. One sign that I heard about was the sign that simply says Gilbert, no different than the water tower that says Gilbert. I am here to say that I am in favor, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Whitney Smith, if you could please come to the podium, if you can share us your name for the record and city or town of residence. And you have two minutes to address the council. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Whitney, and I'm a resident of Gilbert. I actually also live in the downtown Gilbert area. I recently purchased a home there. I'm a native of Gilbert, went to high school at Higley, and then moved to California for 10 years, and returned to Gilbert because I was so excited about the development downtown. And growing up as a high schooler here with nothing to do except to go to dollar movies and hang out at Sonic, this has been really exciting to watch the development of the downtown area. So I'm very in favor of additional development downtown. I think it's not only an exciting move for us, it's a smart move. It really increases the tourism factor, you know, if there's signs and restaurants, and the Hale Theater renovation is amazing, and just all of these things that are really encouraging people to come visit and spend money here and just keep our economy flowing. I'm just very excited as a, once again, Gilbert resident, to be seeing all this development. And I think it really draws in, makes younger people want to live here, and there's a lot more to do than go to Sonic, and very much in approval of this rooftop sign.
Thank you. Dorleese Machado Lindell, if you can come to the podium, share us your name and town or city of residence, and you'll have two minutes to address the council. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council. The reason why I'm here, I'll try to do it really quickly. I gave you a packet. The reason I gave you a packet because it's a little confusing. I'm not here about, I'm here about, I couldn't figure out, why would someone want a rooftop sign that said Gilbert when there's a water tower 440 feet away? But I found out the answer. The answer is that the individual who wants the rooftop sign has, and has a bar that's coming in, and they are part owners of the bar. And the bar is the first rooftop bar in Gilbert, so they want the first rooftop sign, and they want it to say Gilbert. So if you look at your packet, if you would, and you look at the sign, Ticket Force, this is a sign in 2014. As you can see, it has a rooftop sign, and it says Ticket Force. The individual wants rooftop, didn't want rooftop signs, they're saying, "We don't want to advertise." However, in 2014, they did. So I will tell you, this is the mock-up in 2014. And currently, the mock-up for the new bar, if you could see on it, it does say Gilbert. So you think to yourself, "Why would this person do this? Why would we just want Gilbert?" So I say to you, if you just take that rooftop sign, instead of put Ticket Force on there, you put Gilbert, and then you scroll down and you have bar. The owner of this property has Gilbert Bar LLC. They own the LLC of Gilbert Bar. There is a reason why we're doing this. I then say, "This is not, not a non-commercial sign. This is a commercial sign, trying to manipulate the system, and this is bad for Gilbert. This is a can of worms." Not only that, you cannot regulate the shut-off time, or verbiage, or anything else, and I hope that you do not support this. Thank you. And somebody else gave me their time, but obviously, I didn't get it.
Braylon Smith, if you can share us your name for the record, share us the city or town of residence. We'll have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is, sorry, Braylon Smith, and I do live in Gilbert, Gilbert resident, own a home here. So I just want to speak, I'm really glad she went before me. The individual who is talking about putting the rooftop sign on the building is my father. And I just want to go into a little bit about why he wants to do that. So when my family built this building, it was really exciting. It's one of the only owner-occupied buildings in downtown Gilbert. Their office is there. My parents have lived here for 17 years now, raised both of us here, moved to Gilbert in the early 2000s because they wanted a family-friendly place, which I think that this town has done an excellent job of upholding. The main reason that my father wants and loves this sign is simply because he loves Gilbert. He is so proud to be a building owner in the Heritage District, and to imagine that you're driving south down Gilbert Road towards the Heritage District, and you see this beautiful sign that says Gilbert, I think would just be so amazing for the community, something that would highlight and bring people here with the tourism. And just to comment about, the bar sign is actually going to be on the north, or, sorry, on the west-facing, so the sign that says Gilbert will have no word that says bar underneath it. And for the original mock-up document that was drawn, that did have Ticket Force on the building, was drawn by an architect before we had given them anything that we wanted. So that was just the architect's decision. We have never talked about putting a sign that says Ticket Force on the building. The reason that we want this sign is because we love Gilbert. My parents are very proud property owners in Gilbert, and we just want to highlight how amazing this town is. So, yeah, that's pretty much all I had to say, and thank you.
Thank you. Mum Martins, if you can share us your name for the record and town or city of residence. And you'll have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Daniels, council members. My name is Mum Martins, and I'm a Gilbert resident. I'll make my comments brief. I just wanted to share that I have a young family, we're a family of four, and we frequent the Heritage District quite often. And in the last two months, we've had three sets of family and friends' visitors from all across the US, and each set of visitors, we've always taken them to the Heritage Downtown area. We love it. We have really enjoyed the time that we have had here in Gilbert. It's just been a little over two years, and we specifically moved to this area because of the things that we heard about Gilbert, and we love it every day. My husband says every morning, "I'm so glad we're here, and I can't believe we're here." So we made the right decision in moving our family here in the bigger picture. But we're excited to see all the growth and development all across the city, and be part of it, and to see it change, just in the two years that we've been here. And we've really enjoyed it, and we take our kids out. I don't foresee any concern, but I am glad to see that the Heritage District is expanding and diversifying, and it's not just restaurants. There's other things that are going to be going up, and I think if we want to continue to get the tourism in that particular area, we do have to think about, what are other things that we can expand and look into to make that area more attractive for others? So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Kathy Tilke, if you can come up to the podium. She was for. Kathy, if you can share us her name and town or city of residence, and you'll have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you, mayor and council, Kathy Tilke, Gilbert, Arizona, representing the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce. I appreciate all of the comments and the concerns that have been expressed today. The chamber, we've evaluated the ordinance and the proposal before you, and if I could just, for a second, talk a little history, and one of the things that has been a goal of the Heritage District is, how do we address that you know you've entered the Heritage District, and what would that cost the town of Gilbert, and how can we do it? What kind of signage? And I think that's a piece that, we're talking about one building here, but the fact that we are looking at limited signage and where you can place that, and that we could have a sign at the beginning of the Heritage District and at the end, depending on which way you're going, I think is a great value for the community. And so it's not just about the one building, but about the opportunity to welcome people to our Heritage District. And I believe that there are enough limitations in there to protect us from some of the fears that have been mentioned. And with that, the Gilbert Chamber is in support of this. Thank you.
Mayor, we are done with all our speakers. I do want to say that we received, we'll call it a signature list that was gathered. There was 40 individuals that signed this that indicate that they don't want the rooftop signs in the, so enter that into the record.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I also did receive an email today from an individual who asked for someone to read their statement. They're unable to be here tonight. We don't actually do that, but I did want to make sure that I mentioned her name and added her name to the record at her request as well. Her name is May Wright, and she is against the rooftop sign, so I just wanted to make sure that her voice was heard and accounted for today. Thank you. And we will make sure her statement actually makes it to the public record. I'll make sure you get a copy of that. All right, that brings us to council conversation and dialogue. And is there any individual in the council who wishes to speak on this item?
I appreciate all of the great intentions and the potential that is seen by any of the individuals here tonight of doing this. However, I feel very strongly that there's one icon in the downtown, and that icon is our water tower. And I don't want to distract from that. And I think the potential is great, even by limiting the number of rooftop signs to three, of distracting from that icon. Not only that, I know tonight, I've heard, I heard some comments about branding and marketing and things like that. Even though these signs may be limited to, say, Gilbert or Heritage District, whatever they may say, I still think it's a marketing tool. And it puts a business owner at an advantage by marketing that we are at underneath the rooftop sign that says the Heritage District, or we are underneath the rooftop sign that says Gilbert. And by limiting it to just three, I think we're opening a Pandora's Box where other businesses will say, "That's not fair. You can't do that. You have to allow me to have the same competitive edge." And we've seen, when we worked on the sign code, that there were signs that were allowed in the Heritage District that we actually changed and made it possible to use those signs anywhere in the town in a commercial district. That's another Pandora's Box that I don't want to open. I don't want to have more rooftop signs dispersed throughout the entire town, and I think that's a question that hasn't been answered. So because of those issues, and if we're interested in more identification on the tops of our buildings, there's a great sign that's been painted on top of the garage downtown. If we need to, that's like that, if we have to identify the Heritage District any more than we do. I'd much rather see neon being used creatively on the ground level than up on the rooftop signs. And I know there was mention about entryway signs into the Heritage District, and that has been identified in the plan. And we haven't discussed or decided what that may look like, and we, I hope we're not at a point where we may limit that to a rooftop sign being our entryway into the Heritage District, when there are many other options that could be studied, and we could find something more advantageous than that. So with those thoughts in mind, I've just, I'm not at a point where I can support this. I will not be supporting it tonight.
Mayor, can we get some input from our legal team as to those comments? Meaning, if we, if this were to pass, do we have concerns that it can be limited to the Heritage District only, or are we concerned that it may go elsewhere based on some of the other previous legal rulings?
Mayor Daniels, Councilmember Ray, if the town council does pass this, it can be limited just to the HVC, to the Heritage. And there's no right or no petition that could be brought to say that it must, must be forced outside into the rest of the community unless the council does approve that.
And do we, on that same vein, do we have any concerns that, any legal concerns that other businesses within the Heritage District will say that it's unfair competition, or that they weren't one of the first three, or they have a two-story building instead of a three-story, et cetera? Does that cause any legal heartache or not?
We don't have any concerns that it would. It's open right now, the first three. It's open to anyone as of this time, so the first come, first served is the way it would be. And we don't have any serious concerns of legal challenges being brought by a fourth person that wants to come at a subsequent time.
One further question, Mayor, for the legal team. One of the concerns that's been brought up by multiple people, both via email and in person tonight, is the idea that the town won't have any control on what is in these signs, or at least have limited control, and people could put something that may be deemed offensive by somebody. But I just want to make sure that I understand it correctly, that people can do that now on the side of their business, right? As part of the sign code, when someone builds a building, they have, based on the square footage of their building and a few other parameters, they can then put a sign on the side of their building that could say, "Bank of America," or it could say anything else that they want, as long as it fits those parameters. Is that, is that a true statement based on the Supreme Court case?
That's correct. If the sign code says that, in certain areas, that it's limited to commercial, then what's limited is the advertising of the commercial speech. In this case, it would be limited to non-commercial. The town could not regulate the speech other than saying it cannot be an advertisement. The town does retain design review guidelines and oversight over that, so any sign that would come, be proposed to the town council, or be proposed, would come for site plan review and sign review. So you would know what the content is, you can't regulate that content. And any subsequent change, if someone wanted to replace an existing rooftop sign, they would have to go back through the sign review board for that approval.
So it's not just something where someone can go out and quickly build a sign? There's still additional process for them to go through and parameters for them to create the sign within in order to get the final approval. Is that correct?
That's correct. But the approvals of the design, making sure it's per code, not the content.
Thank you.
If I could just remind the council, we had an opportunity at one point when we were adopting our sign code, the current sign code that is a community-wide side code, and we erred on the side of freedom of speech, recognizing that there is always going to be some risk associated with that. I was really proud of our council's vote on that issue as we opted to the side of freedom for individuals, even if that, on occasion, that freedom makes some of us a little bit uncomfortable. But because we believe in that as a principle of this community, I was, I was quite proud of the way that the council voted on that. And so just a quick reminder that we've had that vote. All right, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And I know that, and piggybacking on what you're saying, I believe we have the most freedom-loving, business-friendly, search-loving sign code in the country. And again, we're very proud of that, and I know that the Supreme Court, you know, had changed even our signs in our public right-of-way. In fact, you can have some very nasty signs today in our public right-of-way, and we would have nothing that we could do today to pull those signs, because it would be considered, you know, a freedom of speech. And, you know, that's just, unfortunately, maybe the bad things of that. But I do want to say, I believe that our business community and our residents are very smart and very conscious of the privileges and the freedoms that we have here in Gilbert. And I, I got to believe, and I have faith, that we won't see those types of negative types of signs that people are fearful of. And today, even on a business that has a banner, if they want to get a banner and put something negative and just hanging on their wall on a business building, again, we wouldn't have any control of that either with that. The one thing I do want to say, and just compliment everyone that did speak, and it is a, a topic of many, many discussions for both pro and against. But I believe everybody that spoke today will admit that the downtown and the transformation of the downtown over the last number of years has brought our community together. has brought our community together, where we always talk about building committee. That's our role here in a town. And I know the mayor loves to use the terms, "It builds human connections with others." And when we're in a downtown and we see everyone smiling and talking and communicating, it's probably the greatest joy that we could have here serving on the council to see the wonderful turnout, the wonderful destination that the downtown has brought. And having, you know, the word Gilbert on the top of a building, I think it just adds to that vibe and adds to that destination and that community here in the downtown. So I'm very much in favor of this. I wanted that sign on it originally. When Ticket Force came, I saw some of the early drawings of Gilbert written on there. But again, thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. Here's a couple of thoughts here. First off, thank you for everyone that expressed your viewpoints on this. Obviously, we have to vote one way or the other. So my thought is, I'm supportive of this. Let me give you a couple of the reasons why. First, the, there's very tight controls on this, right? Just the fact that it's non-commercial has a lot of restrictions, just implicit with that designation. I'm actually open to commercial rooftop signs. I think a business needs to market, and they need to brand, and I'm fine with that. I think that's a great thing. We have property rights, and we respect those. Those are sacred. And of course, those are limited. You can't have a big sign that keeps people up all night. You can't violate the property rights of other peoples, but that's on the commercial side. This is non-commercial, right? So just the fact that it has that designation has a ton of implicit restrictions in addition to all the other ones, like the restrictions on how much light it emits. You know, there's probably more issues on some of these freeway signs that are so bright. Sometimes, you know, I'm surprised there's not more accidents there. I'm certainly more concerned about some of the stuff that we're seeing on the street rather than on the rooftops in the downtown. If you just pull the police reports of what's going on down, that's really where we should be spending some time. But the rooftop sign, you know, there was a comment about, "We're voting on things that we don't know." Mayor, you made a very good point about, you know, the freedom aspect there. I'd offer up a case study in the Santan Valley, Santan Village, excuse me. There was a retail store there that put a big, you guys know which one. I'm not going to name names, but they put a big, huge poster that a lot of people objected to. And there were a lot of phone calls that were put into that management, to the management of that company. And that company responded, right? They're subject to the public feedback, right? They want to have a good face, whatever their business is, and they responded. So if there is something objectionable, they're going to get feedback, right? And our former mayor used to say, "Feedback is a gift," and those gifts are generous in Gilbert. So we know people respond when there is, and they'll give that feedback. So I have a couple of other things. I'll just cut that short, but I'll be voting in favor of this, Mayor, tonight. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers wish... Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. If I'm counting the votes, I think I see where this vote is going tonight. And I've been struggling with this. I think some of you know that I'm pretty active on social media, and I've been watching some conversations online about this. And one of our speakers tonight actually posted in a very large group and had over 100 comments. And the majority of the comments were against this. They said that our Heritage District is amazing, similar to many of the things we've heard here tonight. It's amazing. It already brings a lot of people in. The Gilbert Water Tower is an icon. They find the signs very tacky. I sat through the whole Planning Commission meeting and listened to the residents come and speak, and the business owner come and speak, and heard what the Planning Commissioners had to say. And they're very thoughtful in their deliberation and everything that they delivered that evening. And again, I've still been going back and forth since that night as to what would be the best thing. Are we being business-friendly by allowing something to be new and innovative and different? And I was sent an email, I think most of us were sent an email, with a conceptual plan of what the sign could possibly look like. And I have to say, that turned me off more than it turned me on. I thought it was extremely ugly. Now, I am going to say, in that respect, though, these signs are going to be super expensive. There is not going to be any opportunity to get public input. Once the signs go up and somebody says, "Well, I hate that. It looks terrible on your building," these signs are going to be really expensive, and they're going to stay there for a very, very long time, because the business decided to pay for them and put them in those locations. I struggle with opening Pandora's Box, as our elder statesman here said, that, sorry, I can't resist. It's your birthday week, that we're opening a Pandora's Box to allowing something, and I'm generally very open to those things. I was on the Planning Commission the night that the project across the street came in, and the signs, the digital reader signs, were made way too small. And I'm very open to things like that. I see this as opening a whole nother box. I've already been approached by developers that said, "Well, pass it so that we can make it the whole Heritage District, not just three locations." Pass it, I've already heard this week, pass it so that it can be made the whole entire town of Gilbert. So that box is already slightly being opened, already slightly being pushed opened. And in the decision here tonight, I'm going to have to side with Councilmember Scott Anderson on this. I know that it's going to pass, and I could very easily just play the very simple political game and say, "I'm just going to agree with it to agree with it." But I am not comfortable making that decision and opening that box for our Heritage District at this time, and feeling that it would open it for the whole entire town. And I'm not ready for that. I think we've made very major steps in other directions, that we've been very innovative and allowed for other things. I'm always open to hear new suggestions, but I'm not ready to make that one tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep this very brief. I just want to say that I think, you know, the success over the last few decades from the Heritage District really is because the town has allowed flexibility and innovation and creativity from business owners and property owners. And I want to see that continue, and I want to see the progress and the evolution of the downtown continue with that. So with that, of course, I'll be supporting it.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. I think that's everyone, and I am also in support of this agenda item. I, we have to push innovation in this community. It's something we talk about regularly. We are the city of the future. I will continue to promote that as we grow, recognizing that we want to celebrate our heritage in every way that we can. And so I'm actually really excited about the creativity that's involved in this rooftop signage initiative. And I'm grateful to the business owners and also the residents who share with us the feedback that we really need to hear on both sides. It's so helpful for us to really hear and to make sure that our residents are heard, seen, and valued in that effort. So thank you to each of you. I've spent time with many of you and grateful for your efforts. With that, I will close the public hearing on agenda item 33 and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve agenda item 34.
33. 33.
Excuse me, 33?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. That moves us to agenda item 34. We'll ask Eric to do, do we need a brief overview, council? Who wished for this one to be pulled?
We actually just have a resident here that, that's the only reason I pulled it, was that I just want to add this to the public record.
Someone who wishes to speak?
No, they do not wish to speak.
Okay. Let's do this. Let's open the public hearing on agenda item 34, and we'll have you read that.
Kathy Tilke does not want to speak. She is against this agenda item.
Nope, she's not against it. I think we got a letter in favor.
Are you, you're for? Okay, well...
Kathy Tilke, on behalf of the Gilbert Chamber, is for the water allocation policy.
That's what I was thinking. I will correct this on your form.
She had to fill out a few tonight.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have some comments.
Please.
So I'm supportive of most of the language here. There's a couple of things that I'd like to see that would strengthen it. Let me just put two things out. It has to do with the review process. I don't think it's clear enough for someone that's put into that to help them be comfortable. So I'd really like to see language that addresses two things just with regards to this review process, should that be triggered. Number one, when it does go to the town manager, whoever he delegates, I think we need to delineate the criteria that they're going to be evaluated on. I think that transparency is helpful, and it needs to be in the policy, not just the level or trigger. But, and if it's there, maybe I missed it. Maybe Eric can clarify that, because to me, it's really just volume of usage. But in terms of, like, if the town manager's going to approve it or not. The second thing is a timeframe. I'd like to communicate to these businesses that they're going to hear in four days, where four, you know, four-day week, or eight days, two weeks, you know, so that they have some reasonable timeframes to hear back from. So if that's in there, maybe I missed that, Eric. But in terms of, I'm specifically talking about the town manager review of those high-volume user cases.
Mayor and council, for, you've got two questions there. We'll deal with the question about the review process. This is going to be dealt with through the existing design review process, with existing processes in place that the Water Conservation, Water Resources Group already looks through projects as they come through, and were a mandatory sign-off for all of those projects before they get to the design review, through the design review process, excuse me. And so that's the timeline for all initial reviews. And regarding the second question about users that might need to go beyond Tier One water usage, is that the question that you had?
Yeah, we're talking the extreme-high use.
Okay, yeah. So the criteria that are to be used by the town manager are included in the Water Resources Management Strategy Report. And so those are for redevelopment and economic development. And there's specific industries that are targeted under economic development, so STEM-focused employment, high-wage positions in knowledge-based fields such as technology, aerospace, and aviation, manufacturing, or biotechnology, and life sciences. So those are for economic development. And then under the redevelopment position, it is new uses on an existing site that present additional employment, recreational, or social benefits in excess of the previous use. So those are the criteria that the manager will use.
Okay, so if I may, so in the application or whatever follow-up documentation, they'll have opportunity to express how they're going to be addressing each of those points or whatever category they're falling into.
Yeah, we conceive this portion as a conversation.
Okay. And then, thank you for that, Eric. I appreciate that. And then, just in terms of timeframe, is there any issue with just being able to tell them, "Hey, we're going to have this review process"? I don't know why it's in design review. I mean, this is not a design issue. It's a water issue, but maybe that's a separate discussion here. But, you know, can't we tell them, "Hey, this is going to be turned around. You're going to get a decision in a timely manner and not hogtied up in, you know, DRB or some other..."
Yeah, it will be the staff review portion of the design review. And the reason we do it that early, we want to get to folks as early as possible and remove any kind of uncertainty that they might have in their mind as far as water supply requirements before they make any of those significant investments.
And just to clarify, we're actually within our current design review timeframes that already exist. So this isn't an extra step that we're going to allocate time for. It's already within that current window of time of the design review process. And the reason we do design review and not zoning is because everybody goes through design review, and not everybody goes through a zoning.
Okay. I appreciate that clarification. Thank you on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions for Eric? All right. This has been a multi-year effort, and something I think that I'd like to just highlight again as being an effort to have our community really be prepared for the future. And I'll go back to the mantra, "We are the city of the future." And this is an absolute component that helps prepare us for the future. And I, we had this discussion this morning at the executive advisory meeting, and Eric presented this to some of our senior leadership throughout different organizations within the town. And one of the things that we were highlighting really was the fact that not only does this protect our current residents and businesses to ensure that their water supply will be there now and in perpetuity, but also it does provide a mechanism for future water users to have access to our system in a very responsible way. So I'm just really excited about this and grateful for all the work that's been done by Eric and Mary and the entire team that have worked so hard on this, and glad that we're seeing it come to fruition. All right, I will close the public hearing on agenda item 34 and entertain a motion.
Mayor, with that, we move to approve agenda item 34.
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to administrative items. Are there any board commissioner committee reports from the council?
Well, I just wanted to share that the grandfather of the Riparian Center and I, and former, and former council members, vice mayors, and mayor, attended the 20th celebration of the Riparian Center. It was fantastic to acknowledge, literally, something that has transformed and has become a wonderful destination here in Gilbert. And anyway, it was a great celebration. Staff, so Robert and team, so actually, Robert's on vacation this week because he needed some time off. But to our Parks and Recs team was just fantastic to, yeah, that's a...
Was great.
Would you like to make any additional comments about that? Since it's your birthday, we'll give you the mic.
Eh? I didn't hear that.
You're a good sport, Councilmember Anderson. We sure like you. Patrick, I'm just looking, do we need to make any announcements about the agenda item that we brought up last time, which was the Citizens Transportation Advisory Committee? I think that's going to be on our next council agenda, November, our November meeting. He absolutely knows everything about it, because he actually had to write the description.
This time, I do.
We'll give him some points. All right. Report from town manager and current events.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Happy birthday to statesman, grandfather, former town of Gilbert employee.
That's godfather, not just grandfather. Godfather.
And father of the Riparian Reserve. Preserve. Okay, bear with me. We've got a lot of great things to announce. I want to start by thanking Doug Boyer, who was the town's first purchasing manager, kind of brought our efforts together. He was with us seven and a half years and is recently retired. We gave him a week off, and then we promptly brought him back for some part-time work to help us until we can get that position filled. And we may hold on to him for a little bit longer than that. But he did a great job for us. He was very meticulous in his work, and we thank him for everything he did for us. Another retirement, K9 Spring retired today, our K9 arson dog. Seven years of wonderful service for this community. You could spend 20 minutes talking about all the things and ways that dog impacted our organization, our community, and the great work that she did. Some of the highlights, she brought in $1 million in restitution through the criminal court system, and a total of 75 years of collective years in prison for those convicted of arson in our state. She also helped solve some crimes in other states within the Southwest region. She was a very special animal. I want to especially thank Dave Zaring, his handler, as well as his whole family, because that is not just a nine-to-five job. The dog lived with Dave and his family, and the only way the dog ate is twice a day. He had to perform his work in sniffing out accelerants, and that's how he got fed, hand-fed from Dave. So very special connection between those two, and a wonderful dog for our community. Dave will fly out next week and get our next K9 arson dog, and it's going to have some big shoes, paws to fill. But K9 Spring was a wonderful asset for us. I'd like to thank, yet my jokes, it's late. The jokes are going to get worse, I promise. They weren't good to begin with. I want to thank Eric Braun, Chris Payne, and a host of other people who helped put together that water allocation policy. That really is something that prepares us for the future and secures what is a precious resource for us and for everyone in this state. Next, I want to thank Dan Henderson, John Baird, and several other people for the hard work on the nine... work on the 9.1 acre land sale that you approved tonight. That is going to bring a host of wonderful amenities to our downtown and just keep that incredible success moving forward. And that was a long and arduous endeavor, and they did great work. I also want to thank Mary and Kyle and John Baird, and again, a whole host of people. You approved the closing of escrow, or the final piece for the 80-acre land sale tonight. And as you know, we're going to use those funds proceeds to help develop our new regional parks, our large parks that are moving forward. So great work on them. And then lastly, I'd like to ask Nathan Wymer to come to the, Nate, I just gave him the wrong last name, Nathan Williams. Nathan Williams, to the microphone. Nathan, after a national search, has been selected as our new chief people officer for the town of Gilbert. So I'd just like him to introduce himself to you and tell us a little bit about himself.
Mayor and council, I appreciate the opportunity, and I'm honored for this, the faith and the trust that's been placed in me to carry out this responsibility. We would typically say we're not surprised that Patrick wouldn't remember my name, but there are two Nathan Williams in the town, to be clear, so you should by now know one of us. I have enjoyed my time here thus far and the opportunity I've had to serve and serve this community. And I'm also really grateful that we waited until the end, after everyone had left, to bring me up here. I wanted to, really quickly, I'll quote the eldest member of the community, Councilmember "We were looking for a unicorn. We found a snuffleupagus. Let's hope you're not a Jabberwock." So, thank you.
Well, Nathan, you can't leave yet, because I have this list of violations from our, you know, town manager I'd like to share with you, because I think he needs...
I've got a file cabinet just for him.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Nathan reports directly to the town manager, so that in mind.
That's right.
Thank you, Nathan Williams. I forgot one name, and, you know, with most of the things we do, there is just a team of people involved at the various aspects and points along the process. But one name that was also very involved in the water allocation policy was Dan Henderson, our Economic Development Director. He was a key member of that team, so I want to thank Dan as well. And I'm going to stop talking.
Don't worry, Patrick. I've forgotten lots of names.
You're really going to play that one up now. Doesn't get you out of all the exciting things we do. All right, report from council on current events. Seeing none, I have nothing additional to add except for, please enjoy a cookie, and I hope everybody has a great week. Take care.